Good evening, everyone, and welcome to a regular meeting of the Committee of the Whole. We are holding these, this meeting on the traditional territories of the Coast and Strait Salish people known today, specifically the Lakewongan-speaking people known today as the Esquimalt and Songhe's First Nations, whose connections to these lands we acknowledge continue to this day. And I also want to point out that these proceedings will be live cast, webcast, and will be archived for future viewing. So if you come to the microphone at some point, the back of your head will be recorded and your voice. We just have a single item on the agenda tonight, and before we adjourn to some in-camera business, item number one, which is community amenity contributions, and this has been a project underway for quite some time. We had a report to educate council last year, and then some work done by staff to bring this forward. So I would, it's probably best to hand this over to Ms. Jensen, the manager of planning, to introduce this item on the agenda.
Thank you. As council may recall, a review of development cost charges and community amenity contributions was included in council's 2017-2018 strategic priorities. Specifically, council asked staff to retain a consultant to work with staff and council to determine the benefits, costs, and feasibility of implementing a development cost charge and community amenity contribution policy to assist in funding future infrastructure required to service new growth. Council subsequently reviewed, received a presentation on DCCs and CACs where an overview was provided by Dan Wong, who is a senior planner and principal at Urban Systems, and who is with us this evening. At that time, council directed staff to bring forward options for a possible community amenity contribution policy for Oak Bay, and that report is what is in front of you this evening. So as a bit of background, provincial legislation provides a number of different avenues where local governments can require fees or services as a result of development. So for example, upgrades to infrastructure or parkland dedication can be required through a subdivision process. Zoning can allow for greater densities where other amenities or affordable housing are provided. That's usually referred to as density bonus zoning. And a development cost charge program can collect funding for specific infrastructure items, for example, roads, sewers, and parks. Municipalities also use CACs as part of a rezoning process. The basic premise behind this program is that an approved rezoning creates value within the community, and the community should share in that benefit through a public amenity provided by the applicant. Through the application review process, staff would typically work with an applicant to negotiate an amenity that is acceptable to both the municipality and the applicant, and for which the community may not otherwise have the resources to provide. And council would subsequently review that proposal as they consider the rezoning application. These amenities are not used to replace those services that are required through those other programs, such as upgrading to capital infrastructure or parkland dedication. It is very much a separate program. So there are essentially two ways in which local governments can acquire CACs. The first is through a negotiated approach, which is the current method used in Oak Bay. Staff and the applicant use the CAC policies that are outlined in the official community plan to determine a contribution that is in scale with the proposed development. The OCP policies lay out a range of items that can be considered as an amenity, including affordable housing, public art, and public meeting spaces. This approach can lead to a wide range of amenities proposed as part of a development. So for example, some of the items that council has seen to date, there was a rezoning application, OCP amendment at 1632 Yale, that offered Byron Street improvements, playground equipment to the adjacent daycare, and a monetary contribution to a trails fund. That netted the municipality more than $20,000, $21,000 per home. There was a two-lot subdivision on York that resulted in a heritage designation of the existing home. And then you had the rezoning for the Belker Collection on Cadro Bay Road. That provided for a public plaza and road improvements to the Cadro Bay Road and Belker intersection, which results in approximately $4,000 per residential unit. The second approach to determining CACs is through setting a base target amount. Council can establish a policy that sets the base amounts and identifies specific amenities that are of importance to the community. This approach ensures greater consistency and transparency through a rezoning process, and is used by numerous municipalities across the province. And it is the approach that staff are recommending through that draft policy. It is important to remember that community amenity contributions must be obtained fairly through a negotiation process. An agreed-upon amount should benefit the community while not causing significant impact to land values or housing affordability. The rates contained in the proposed policy are intended to provide for a fair and consistent program. Base amounts reflect the type of development that has occurred in the municipality, or is likely to be proposed within the community, and are consistent with the amounts set in the local region. The draft policy proposes a base target of $6,000 per single-family home, $4,500 per duplex, $4,000 per multifamily unit, and $30 per square meter of commercial floor area. The proposed amenities laid out in the policy reflect existing OCP policy and strategic priorities identified by council, and that are not financed through the other programs previously mentioned. Amenities proposed include streetscape improvements along Oak Bay Avenue, tree installations on public land to support the urban forest strategy, climate action initiatives, municipal facilities upgrades, and affordable housing. This does not preclude the other amenities identified in the OCP. You may see situations where an applicant proposes a contribution that is not identified in the draft policy. Council could also entertain those proposals. So to circle back to council's direction, to bring this report back to council, staff have developed the draft policy that you have in front of you, which is based on a professional review, and that included a comprehensive review of other CAC programs. We have not to date undertaken any direct consultation with the development industry to garner their feedback. With council's direction, staff can certainly arrange to meet with those representatives. At this time, we're happy to answer any questions and receive additional direction.
Thank you. Ms. Jensen, would you also just introduce our guest here tonight as well?
Certainly, if I may. This is Dan Wong from Urban Systems. He was the one presenting the presentation at the July meeting.
Yes, I remember, just for the, just for everybody sitting around and at home, Mr. Wong, welcome. And at this point, I'm just going to bring it back to this table, and if anybody from committee has any questions of staff or Mr. Wong, this is the right time to ask them. Counselor Ne.
Good. Thank you, thank you very much to staff for bringing this forward. I know it's been a long time waiting for, for us all. We've been, been looking forward to this, and it creates a nice piece of clarity for, for the municipality with our development community and our citizens. So thank you very much. It's a nicely laid-out report. Just a couple of questions. The first one, well, let me, let me just ask this one. So the proposed on figure two, the proposed base community amenity contribution target rates that have been defined, I, I'm just wondering how, how this actually works when a contribution is negotiated with staff and an applicant. So let's just imagine, you know, it's a, it's a multifamily unit, and there's $4,000 per residential unit. How, how then is it decided? What, how that $4,000 per unit is used to pay what kind of an amenity as listed in the OCP? Who decides that, and, and how is it decided?
Ms. Jensen?
Thank you. It would literally be still part of a negotiation process. So as an applicant came in with a proposal, such as the multifamily development, we would be looking to this policy to determine, first of all, what is the base amount that we're looking at, $4,000 per unit, as well as where they would propose to put that money towards. So it may be selecting one of those items off the list. They may choose, depending on where the development is taking place, or what is next to them, what is happening in the neighborhood, to select something that's already in the list in the, in the official community plan. But essentially, it would be a discussion back and forth between staff and the applicant as to what that base amount looks like, where they would like to put that money towards, and then coming forward to council, and what's council's final decision on it.
Yeah, so is the tabulation that's being proposed, it's a base amount that's used as a starting point, or does that become a set amount?
It is a starting point. It is still part of a negotiated process.
Okay. And, and then the applicant would have some say in how that gets spent, like if it's in public art, or for roads, or bike paths, or whatever. That's what you're saying? Okay. Thank you. The other thing I was wondering, I, I like the summary that you've used, the comparative summary of other municipalities, and how their, their, how their policy is laid out. I was just wondering, the, the one with Victoria, because I was quite curious that as a comparative, and they've got their amenities set out in their neighborhood plans, so it's not been specified here. But can you just help us understand, if we were looking at their neighborhood plans, what would we see? Would there be variability in the different areas of Victoria, or what would that look like?
Ms. Jensen?
Thank you, Chair. Yes, as you look at each neighborhood plan, as they've gone through that process for that neighborhood, they have set aside certain amenities for, within each of those areas. So one neighborhood might be public art, another neighborhood might be streetscape improvements. It really depends on the plan that you're looking at. I do have to caution with that one, that, that is a policy that was written, I believe 2017 was the last update. They are currently reviewing their, their policies as, right now.
Is that to mean to say, then, for each neighborhood plan, would they have sort of base targets that are consistent across the, the jurisdiction, or does that vary with each neighborhood too? I do understand the nature of the amenity contribution changes per neighborhood, but the, is the number, the base rate, the same?
Well, there's sort of two levels to Victoria's amenity program. They do have the amenities that are set out within the neighborhood plans, but they also have a separate policy document that speaks to various levels, various amounts that they might be looking at, depending upon where you are, the zone that you're in. So it is kind of a multi-layered approach.
Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Patterson?
Yes, thank you, Mayor, and to staff through you. Again, thank you for this report. On page three, you've got the, the chart there, and the talk shows the market rate, and looks at the community, the CACs, compares into proportional to, to valuations. And it does state that, that we have to be careful so as to benefit the community while not causing significant impact to land values and housing affordability. I'm wondering if that ship hasn't already sailed, though. Is that a fair statement in Oak Bay? Will it, you know, is it something that we, we need to have grave concern about? It would seem that a lot of the, the land values, market values, have been driven upward by developers and real estate agents. And do we understand what is happening in Oak Bay? Do we follow, do we track applications so that we understand what the, what the end result is to the community and the benefit to the community? It's just when I look at some things, you know, there on Cranmore, there was a two-lot subdivision where, or a one lot, and then it was subdivided, so two houses. And it's been, well, it's been listed at almost 500,000 over assessed value. So I would say this, there's a significant upward thrust, but it's, you know, if we added on six, seven, $10,000, I don't know that that would have had any impact on that. Could I, could I get perhaps some comments there?
Yes, I guess, Mr. Anderson?
Your worship. The caution that's provided in the report, and that we see when we're, we're looking at rates that we set for community amenities, is really to be aware of, or cognizant of the potential impact of adding costs to, say, a proposed development, and impacting perhaps the, the land sale price that might be occurring. If it, if it, in theory, if it can get too high, it can have some impact on whether or not somebody is going to be able to buy land or, or not for purposes of development. So it's, it's quite a very, it's a very general sort of caution provided to those of us that are setting our amenity policies. And I think you're absolutely right, that, that the, the values in, in Oak Bay and other southern region communities are, are quite high. So a $5,000 or $6,000 amenity charge per unit, for example, is not really going to have that measurable impact on the values.
Counselor Patterson?
Thank you, Mayor. If I could just follow up, too. What about developments that are, have a large section of luxury space in them? For, like, some of these other communities are doing, trying to achieve affordable housing, and, and making housing possible for different entry groups. But what about when the development is largely luxury space? Does that impact any of the discussions that are held, perhaps, in some of these other communities?
Specifically, does it impact the community amenity charge?
Yeah, I would say no, it doesn't. It's really the, the units that are proposed, and, and the type, multifamily, or single-family, or duplex, depending on the rates. So it really doesn't impact in terms of the amenity.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Patterson. Counselor Green?
Thank you, your worship, and through you, to Ms. Jensen. Thank you very much for the report and the draft policy. I actually had the pleasure of attending the presentation by Mr. Wong last summer, so it was very interesting. And I have, I have your draft, or not your draft, sorry, I have your presentation in front of me. I just have a few questions that I'm, I'm struggling with a little bit when it comes to this policy, and, and I'm hoping you can help me. So first of all, in Oak Bay, and this is partly reflective of my work with the Regional Housing Trust Fund, because we've had a similar conversation at that table. How do we measure current market value in Oak Bay? How do we define low-income, moderate income in Oak Bay? And there is a new term now being used among housing authorities, including the RHTF, which is the CRD's Regional Housing Trust Fund Body, and that is near-market values. So we have a number of terminology, a, a number of terms being used to describe the market. So I'm, I'm just wondering how we define our market against some of those, those factors. Are the target amounts low when compared to the high property values here in Oak Bay? So I'm just saying, within the context of Oak Bay, do you think our target amounts are enough? And I appreciate, you know, you will answer that, help, and help me with that. And are the targets, you, you said they were a starting point. Are they fluid? So could they go down? Or is 4,000 the baseline, and they go up from there? And finally, should we review the policy through our other land use committees, Advisory Plan Commission, and the Heritage Commission? And finally, fair, consistent program, which is how the report describes it, how is that measured? And is it fair and consistent for the community and for the developer? Is that how we, we balance fairness and consistency? So those are some of my, my questions that I'm struggling with, and I'm hoping you can help me. Thank you.
I'll put that to Ms. Jensen, or Mr. Anderson, whoever. You tagged him a little bit. All right, fair enough.
We'll tag team and see if I catch everything here. So your reference to what is considered market housing, that, in my opinion, would be a review as each individual application comes through. What is it that they're hoping to achieve? And then what are we looking at, at that current level in terms of market prices? The OCP does have a policy in there with respect to 30% of income level, which really reflects what you hear from CMHC. So I think we would be looking to that in terms of what those values might be. As far as the rates go, I wouldn't anticipate that they would go down, but they are not a fixed amount. That is something that I would really caution against using them as a fixed rate. You want it to still be part of a negotiated process. So I would see that as the starting point, and then depending on what it is that's being proposed, we would work with the applicant to try to enhance that, that base value. As far as reviewed by other committees, again, we had direction from council to come forward with poly, policy options to this committee. That's what we've done. If council would like us to go out and talk to any of the committees, or to the development industry, or other interested parties, we'd be more than happy to do that.
Thank you. Just a question. Is the 30% of total household income, is that still accurate? And the only reason I ask that question, in Oak Bay, I understood it was closer to 45%. Have, have you heard that, or? Thank you.
If I may, I know, I know there's been quite a bit of discussion in the last few years around, around that. We are still using the 30% as, as a rate. So I know there's some differences that are occurring right now, but it is the base that we're using now.
Thank you.
Counselor Appleton?
Thank you, worship. Question to staff through you. I just, I wanted to pick up on just some of the policy options, and specifically on the idea of the land lift analysis, which is mentioned briefly at the bottom of page two, as part of a negotiated settlement. And I'm just wanting to confirm with staff that in the, in the current negotiated methodology that we use now, that we don't require a land valuation, as is mentioned there. Am I, am I correct in saying that?
To staff?
That's correct, your worship.
A follow-up through you to staff, your worship. So I'm just wondering, it, I understand that this is a, a method, or that this land valuation is, is sort of a methodology or a system that's used to sort of provide more consistency in negotiated CAC contributions in situations where there isn't the base value set. So I'm just kind of wondering, I, I note that staff's recommendation is for the, the set values. I'm just wondering, because there's not a lot of detail specifically about this land lift analysis, and having a, potentially a consultant-based, or a third-party analysis of that, of that valuation, I'm just wondering whether or not that was considered as part of your analysis, or whether or not we could potentially broaden out the, the, that option, the negotiated option, to include that type of valuation, and, and potentially also ask staff with their expertise how, how that would typically be structured, as far as how those valuations would play out.
Mr. Anderson?
Thank you, your worship. The land lift method, or, or using pro formas, is most typical with major projects and complex projects, and, and there's usually a fairly high potential value for amenity in, in those types of scenarios. So what we find, I think, particularly for, for Oak Bay, that we probably wouldn't have enough of those to really start to use the land lift method. It, it does have a, a cost involved on both parties that sometimes can sort of take out most of the amenity charge that you, you end up with when you're at, at the scale of development that we're seeing in, in communities such as Oak Bay. So it, it wouldn't, in my humble, it wouldn't be a, a method that we'd want to use to, to sort of bring land lift as our method in, as part of a negotiate approach, and no, no base rate. We could, as some communities have done, have a, a base rate, and then for major projects, identify the use of a land lift approach, which again is a, a much more complicated calculation, as I'm sure we can all understand.
Thank you. Does, does it preclude using that model for, I think, a very large, complicated redevelopment? We having this sort of policy, or does it?
No, the policy, you know, if, if we so determined that the scale of the proposed development is something that we needed to, to, as part of the negotiation, use that method, we could bring that into play. But again, I was just cautioning that if we, if we just continue with our negotiated, and then say we'll use land lift for everything, it, it doesn't really serve a return at the sort of lower end of the amenity scale, I guess would be the best way to put it.
Thank you. Counselor Appleton?
Thank you, Chair, through you. And a follow-up to, to the mayor's comment, which, and I appreciate very much the information. I guess then I would take that another step further, and say if we were to prepare a policy that, that mirrored the approach just mentioned by staff, as far as having a, in a sense, a threshold for triggering a land lift valuation rather than the base rates, is that typically something that would be written into a policy? Is that something that would, that would exist in a policy? Would you be able to establish a, a threshold at which you would, you would use something like that? Or would it be sort of to the discretion of staff based on the complexity of the project?
I'm, I'm seeing some consultative glances back and forth here on staff, so I'll just turn to Mr. Anderson, I think.
It really, in, in my experience, it would be just looking at the scale of the development and staff, sort of determining that that would be something that would be useful and, and worth the time and effort to, to apply. I, I haven't seen setting a threshold where you, you, it's usually, if I can recall, I think Victoria might even have something like that. It's usually setting for, you call it a major project, and you define that. And then that's when you basically kick into the land lift, or the pro forma calculations.
Thank you. Just for my clarity, that designation of major project, is that sort of a recommendation of staff to council, and they make that declaration, or is it just at a staff level?
Yeah, thank you, worship. It, it is something that if a community has a, a range of developments that include, what I'll call, major developments, 20-story apartment buildings, you would then set that out in policy, so it was clear that you had major projects defined, and then the land lift approach, or the valuation is used as part of that. But I, I guess what I'm sort of saying without saying is that I don't think we'll have projects of a, a major scale in, in Oak Bay, based on what the community plan says, and, and what we've seen to date, that would justify using the land lift analysis.
But again, you said that could be done.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Worship.
Counselor Appleton?
I, thank you, worship. Just one quick notation to staff. I, just so I don't get this right. I note that, that the list of amenities subject to the policy laid out on page five of the staff report does include affordable housing, but the draft policy actually doesn't in section 2.1. I note that under 2.1, applicable uses for the, for the amenity contributions doesn't, doesn't include affordable housing on 2.1. I don't know that I'm getting that wrong, or, but I would just, I, I think that, in my opinion, affordable housing is a desirable contribution, obviously. That, maybe that's just an error.
I'll make the question to staff, is that, should that include, the 2.1 include the affordable housing as one of the items?
Yes, thank you, Chair. Just to, to clarify, first of all, OCP policy does speak to affordable housing. The draft policy that you have in front of you also does address affordable housing, but it's not listed with the amenities in section 2.1. Rather, if an applicant is providing affordable housing, it's included within the exemptions. So in other words, as we're looking for amenities, we wouldn't be targeting the amenity rate on the affordable housing units that were being provided. So it acts as an exemption rather than a, a specific item that we're, we're targeting within that development.
Understood, okay. I do note that in the report, it does, as an example, it says you could establish a fund to provide for affordable housing. The, the route taken is to just, to just waiving it in the case of an affordable housing development. Okay. Counselor Appleton?
Thank you, worship. I actually understood that to be something different, in the sense that if you were proposing, if there was going to be an amenity contribution made for a given development, development acts, that a certain portion, that those, that that amenity contribution could be set aside into a fund to provide into a fund to provide for affordable housing. And so that would be an applicable use for that, for an amenity contribution. So if, and if I, if I read this right, I'm just looking at sort of basically potential applicabilities, allocations under section two of the, of the draft policy, talking in section two point one, things that could, you could allocate amenity contributions to. I would think that that would also include a, a fund to provide for, provide affordable housing, unless I read that wrong.
That is, I, I would take that as a, we can have that suggestion made by council to staff to include that if that's the desire of council.
Thank you. And, and I do understand, I appreciate staff's comments because I, I do understand the exemption for the provision of, of affordable housing and that's, and that's great. I, I do appreciate that, just talking specifically about those situations to provide for a, a reserve fund for the provision of affordable housing.
Thank you, Counsel. Yeah, thank you. Counselor Zelka?
Thank you so much, Chair. And through you to, to staff, and thank you so much, staff, for bringing this forward. Very much been appreciating and, and, and looking forward to this coming, coming forward. A couple of questions to start. Just want to confirm, the word voluntary is used. I think, what is that, on page two? Could you please speak to the voluntary aspect of this? If a proponent chooses not to do a CAC approach, does that, what does that entail or not entail? Or if we ask for it and they say no, then what?
Ms. Jensen?
Thank you, Chair. That is a great question. I'm trying to figure out how to answer it. It is a voluntary program. There is nothing in the legislation that says we can set a fixed rate, that we can require an applicant to provide an amenity contribution as part of a, a rezoning application. In fact, council cannot be seen to be selling zoning effectively. So essentially, it is a voluntary program in that staff would be having that, that negotiated discussion with an applicant with respect to what they might be providing as an amenity contribution. Ultimately, that would come forward in front of council, council that can then weigh all aspects of that application, not just the amenity contribution, but also all the different components related to that rezoning application. So ultimately, the decision is still in front of council as to whether they wish to pursue that or not.
Counselor Zelka?
Thank you very much. So it, it sounds like it's a little bit of, of a medicine approach. It's a bit of sugar to help the medicine go down, essentially. But you have to take the medicine anyway.
I'm not sure that was really a question.
Sweeten the pot, is that another word for it?
I think the point is that council ultimately has the decision-making factor on this. So if, if council looked at this and said it didn't mean any of the, you know, community contribution process that would be complete within the rights of the council to not approve that.
Absolutely. So, but what I wanted to be very clear though was, once we decided and once the decision was made and the offer was made, that it would no longer be voluntary once the agreement had been signed. At that point, everyone's committed to going forward, including the community, community amenity contribution as negotiated.
Ms. Jensen?
Thank you, Chair. Yes, and as that rezoning process proceeded, if council had, had taken that application through, it's gone through third reading and so on, we would actually ask the applicant to either be providing that amenity contribution prior to adoption or somehow wrapping that into a covenant so that we can tie that approval with, with the contribution.
Thank you very much for clarifying that. Just wanted to make sure that, that we had some way of, of, if, if that was part of the mix, a part of the sweetness of the medicine going down, then that we had some way of actually, shall we say, enforcing it. I guess in some ways like the, like development permit requirements or the, or the, some of the land, land title aspects. So another aspect of that, is this a policy proposing to be used for every development going forward? So if I say I tore my house down, took it right to the ground and then wanted to rebuild the house from scratch, you would be proposing that I would, in addition to getting a building permit, also put in an extra six thousand dollars or I would be asked for an extra six thousand dollars on the single-family home?
Ms. Jensen, sorry?
If you were building a very large house and needed to rezone your property to build that new house, then yes, we would be focusing on that, that amenity contribution policy. If it is very much a one-for-one, that you are meeting all the qualifications of your zone and you're just renew, putting in for a new building permit, it would not be required. This is very much for rezoning applications.
Required, it's voluntary. So it would not be asked for? It would not be part of the mix? It would not be on the list of the checkmarks?
I think some clarifications required. What can we, what can, what are our options under the community charter or the municipal act that allow us to implement community amenity charges? Can they be done in non-rezoning situations? Maybe I'll direct that to Mr. Wong. He's very silent so far. Mr. Anderson?
So in, in the report, we describe sort of all the forms of, of assistance. We look to the development industry in terms of operating our municipality. Community many contributions are, are there, they're, they're used in rezonings as part of our practice in local government in B.C. and most communities. With respect to the industry participating in, in other areas, we see, for example, development cost charge programs. When, when somebody comes forward and wants to redevelop, needs a development permit subdivision, they provide fringes, works and services as part of those processes. So we have really a whole range of financing programs that, that we engage with people who are developing in, in the community to obtain some either services required for that development or some amenity to provide for the community or to share in the costs of that growth that's being demanded by that. So there's a, there's sort of a whole suite, if you will, of, of financing relationships with those who are developing properties in, in communities. We have not seen folks expand the amenity contribution approach to beyond rezonings in B.C., at least in my experience.
I just, I saw Mr. Wong nodding. I just want to make, is that your understanding as well? That this community many charges are not, are, have you, are you aware of any situations where they're used outside of rezoning?
Through your worship, I'm not aware of any other than that rezoning because again, as, as staff had mentioned, there is no, you will not find the words community amenity charge in legislation as you would development cost charges, development permit guidelines, and those things as well. So it really is, as you mentioned, your worship, the, the voluntary and, sorry, the discretionary role of council to consider applications at time of rezoning to determine whether or not that development is providing the amenities to support community growth and development. So really, it really weighs on council's discretionary authority under rezoning. And so, so these, these are, these are contributions. They're not fees and charges as they would be under the community charter. These are voluntary contributions and these numbers here are targets towards those to guide developers to present something to council for, for council's consideration at a rezoning.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Zelka?
Thank you very much. I appreciate it. I have a couple more questions before I, I'm, I'm done here, at least for the, for the first round. So I, I see you mentioned at the beginning that really this is to service new growth, but at the same time, it's also to offset any impacts of the proposed development. So could this be used in a variance situation, not a rezoning situation, where someone's asking above and beyond the, the, the zoning, the zoning bylaw requirements? Where it's still a single-family home, there's no, it's still the same zone, but they're asking, shall we say, above and beyond the pale?
Turn that to staff. Mr. Anderson, Ms. Jensen?
Staff would not recommend the use of many contributions for anything other than rezonings in Oak Bay.
Thank you.
Okay, so then, thank you very much. That, that clarified a couple of things for me in terms of the approach and the underlying assumptions in terms of what you're taking here. The, the, the first impressions upon reading through certainly the report and, and the approach was that the values chosen and recommended were very conservative, very cautious, especially when compared to not only some experience here within Oak Bay, but also some of our, our neighbors. I mean, the, the address, the, the property on Yale Street was willing to contribute over twenty thousand dollars per lot. And yet, what's being proposed here is only in the six thousand dollars range. And I, I look to, for example, North Sanat, sixteen thousand dollars per lot. Or something like, maybe, maybe a, a better example in terms of, of, for Oak Bay is a place that has quite a range of property sizes and quite a range of values of properties and finding a way to, to accommodate that range. And I've noticed that White Rock, for example, is taking an FAR approach that I think is quite intriguing and might be quite useful for us. For example, if we have a forty or fifty or sixty thousand square foot house being replaced, maybe through some aspects of rezoning, who knows? It would pay the same amount as a, as a much smaller development on a five or six thousand square foot lot. All things being equal, I, I wonder whether an FAR approach might be much more appropriate for Oak Bay, just in terms of our very wide range of sizes and would account for some of the differences in value we found between South and North Oak Bay and the Uptlands, for example.
Can I put that just as a question to staff? Because I think that's just two-part. One, does staff consider sort of that, that model of looking at FAR? But also, you obviously went through a fair bit of analysis and looking at these numbers. I'm curious as to, maybe just a little overview to council. If you could explain why those, where those numbers came from and how they, how they came to be recommended.
Certainly. So as, as we mentioned at the outset, anytime we're looking at an amenity contribution program, it needs, it needs to be a fair program. We're looking at market values. We're looking at housing affordability, land values. So how do we balance all of those together? So when we were originally looking at, at rates to, to, to put into the draft policy for council's consideration, it was really looking at all of those items. We also looked at the surrounding region and some of the, the, the rates that they were setting within their, with their policies. And, and it does cover a range. So when we looked at those, we tried to set something that was mid, a little bit higher into that average range because we do have higher housing prices in Oak Bay. So you will see, within the rates themselves, you'll see that they go, go down in value depending on what you're looking at. So how does land value, how does the proposed use impact on, on our community? So single-family home having a larger impact, using a larger area than what you would see with a duplex or multifamily. So the more you go down that list, the value itself is going to, to lessen the overall impact. You'll, you'll see a, a higher number attached to a multifamily development than what you would see for a two-lot rezoning, for example. So it's really trying to find that balance, not only with the region in general, but also how it ties in with those other programs that we mentioned earlier that would be required for development. So the subdivision, servicing subdivision bylaw, any other programs that might be in place that would, they would also be required to, to feed into.
Mr. Anderson?
Your worship, yeah, I think I also wanted to speak to, you know, if you, if you think about the FAR approach versus the rezoning, let's just go back to a rezoning is typically to, to change the zoning from, from RS1 to RS4, whatever it might be. Within that zoning, there's a maximum allowance with respect to FAR. So that zoning has a representative maximum floor area ratio within it. So, so when, when we set the, 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 the rates, they're based on a rezoning occurring and the number of units that are produced as opposed to the floor area that's being produced. It's the zone change and, and what that produces in terms of demand potentially or impact on the community that we're, we're looking at. It's fairly fine-grained, in my opinion, to start to look at it from an FAR perspective and start to set your rates based on a, a sort of a further gradation of amenity. Again, remembering that this is a, a base for moving from a negotiated approach with no base rate to a, a base rate to allow for a negotiation approach. So it's, it's a little bit more general, I think, than, than sort of drilling down to within a, a zone and then looking at, you're, you're down to development permit level of approvals when you're really finalizing the floor area ratio of any proposed development. That's not typically where amenities are and where they're calculated. They're up at the when-we-rezone stage. So I just wanted to add that. Thank you, worship.
Thanks for that clarity, Mr. Anderson.
I'm about halfway through.
Okay.
With only one item on the agenda, I appreciate.
Sure. Still trying to get it here by eight-thirty at the latest, if at all possible.
Then I'll speak more quickly. And I appreciate the comments of, from staff in terms of that. I, I still believe that these numbers are probably about half of what, of what I would think might be more reasonable for, 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 for Oak Bay, just in, in comparison to, to some of our neighbors. I would love to see these numbers at least doubled, especially when I, when I note, I was actually doing some calculations when a wonderful email arrived. Looking at that wonderful list provided by staff in terms of what we could apply the money for. Turns out, when you apply the money that could potentially be earned on average with our expected growth, with the money we expected to spend it on, it's, it's been estimated to be, at the current rates, suggested fifty-seven years of CACs to earn the money to pay for the municipal facilities upgrades. And I think we should probably expedite that a little bit. So I very much appreciated the, the calculations provided, since I was going to do my best to calculate them anyway. So that's one of the reasons why, especially in comparison to some of our, our neighbors who have similar types of houses, I would like to see these numbers much larger. So a slight segue, I had a chance at, we just kind of came back from the AVICC conference and B.C. Assessments was there. Very relatively small conference, not a lot of intensity or pressure. And luckily, it was just, just a nice, easy pace. I'll do my best to get to my point.
Please to get to the, yeah, ask questions if we could, just to.
The question, well, when I was speaking with B.C. Assessments, I gave them a hard time for the fact that we had such a large difference between the house cost and the land cost, and I tried to blame them. Well, I happened to be speaking with the assessor who knew what she was talking about. And she basically looked at me and said, you're in Oak Bay, right? The problem, she sees it in terms of highest and best worth and what caused the massive increase in housing in the last couple of years. She blamed it on our OCP with respect to the, the, the OCP re-signing of our single-family homes to establish neighborhoods, being up to, up to, if I remember correctly, is it four stories or, it, it, fourplexes? And she basically said that was the number one reason why the values of land shot up through the roof in Oak Bay. So she said, if you've got a problem with market value of the, of the difference in land in Oak Bay, we need to relook again at our OCP. So with that in mind, coming back to this, I, I hear what, what staff is suggesting in terms of being sensitive to, to, you know, affordable housing. I think we need to look at, at that question in another place. I would definitely like to see those who are actually attracted to the wonderful value we have here and the wonderful community and who are willing to pay top dollar and, and if necessary, willing to help contribute to the wonderful benefits we have here. Hence, that's why I would like to see these numbers being much less cautious and much less, shall we say, much less conservative. And if there is, and when we do look at affordable housing, I'd rather deal with it, for example, in some of the new zoning tools that will be handed to us by the province. They're going to be coming up, maybe they already have. I haven't heard about it yet in terms of the.
We're wandering a little off the topic of.
No, we're not. Because we're talking about affordable housing. This is absolutely critical to the use of the community amenity contributions. And I see these being pulled down for fear of affordable housing. But this is not a tool for affordable housing. We're being given lots of other tools to address affordable housing. So I don't think that's actually relevant here at all. I apologize, Chair. This is absolutely critical to the cut, to the calculation of these rates. So that's why I wanted to sort of bring that forward in terms of asking staff to comment on that, please.
I'm not sure exactly, what are you asking them to comment on exactly, just the?
About the, from a planning perspective, the highest and best worth in terms of why the rates and the, the difference in value of land between house, house and land is so great and whether really this is the best tool to be used for affordable housing in Oak Bay in this context.
Okay, that's a huge question. I think, I think we've already asked if, you know, from a, a cost, like a dollar amount perspective, what the, if that's, that they feel they've given us their best professional answer on that. We, we have every right as a council to overrule that, but I don't think we can ask them to justify that on a case-by-case basis. So, but I think, I think the question of, of affordable housing, I'm, I'm not sure exactly what, exactly what, a question to direct to staff here. So perhaps you can narrow that down to a question that's.
Thank you very much, Chair. I'll do my best to, to rephrase. So I, I would hope through you, Chair, that staff has some idea of some of the tools that are coming forward with our new. that are coming forward with our new provincial government with respect to, for example, one of the tools that I know of that's coming forward is the residential zoning tool that's coming forward, which will help with affordable housing. It'll absolutely change the potential usage on that. I'm sure it's going to pull down the value of the land, no doubt, in terms of, once we actually apply it, I'm imagining. If staff could possibly make reference to whether that might be a more appropriate tool or whether this could actually help with affordable housing.
Okay. I will pass it over to Mr. Anderson.
I think I'll take a crack at that, your worship. One thing that we should be mindful of is that we're using this in order to achieve amenity. One of the amenities that are identified and are identified really with the inception of this whole policy approach for amenity contribution is affordable housing. You're absolutely right. There are many, many more tools and I think a great deal more urgency in a lot of communities around affordable housing. They're all available to us. I don't believe it's an either or. I want to comment that there needs to be a very hard look at the proposed, for example, rental zoning in communities. I think it's a tool that the province has presented, but it's one that really needs some serious analysis before we bring that forward and consider that as a tool. So, I guess I just want to say that if somebody comes forward and they propose to provide affordable housing units, we're acknowledging that by not requiring them to pay an amenity charge for those units that they provide that are affordable. We heard this evening that there may be some interest in having a fund that's set up if folks who come forward and propose development that's not affordable but want to contribute to a housing fund. I think that's very positive for the community. We may be able to use that in concert with all the other tools that are being made available to communities to try and deliver some affordable housing. So, I think it's worthwhile keeping affordable housing as part of our amenity contribution. And it's also worthwhile us reviewing the tools that come down the pipe, if you will, and bringing those forward to council so they can consider the full package for us to deliver on that. And if I may, there's one more comment I wanted to make, the fifty-seven-year comment. Remember, amenity contributions are a contribution to share. And so, those costs that are listed as estimates for some of those items are not expected to be paid for by an amenity contribution only. So, I just wanted to clarify that. Thank you, your worship.
Thank you. Mr. Anderson, Councilor Zelka?
Sorry, last point. First of all, thank you very much. I'm heartened to hear staff make reference to, from an exemption perspective, exempting whatever these fees are for something identified as affordable housing makes absolutely perfect sense. Hence, the rates have nothing to do with affordable housing because we're going to exempt them. So, just keep those two items separate, please, separate pots. I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I have a number of other people that want to go back for a second time. Councilor Ne, Councilor Green, Councilor Patterson. I just have a couple of questions and then I'll cycle through again, if I don't mind. First off, I just acknowledge the fact that even those numbers calculated at a 0.5% growth rate, we haven't hit that ever in our history of, since 1962, I think. So, it's hard to base real numbers off of that. And I think it was highlighted in the original report back last year that our actual growth rate is quite low and so that the total numbers here are not substantial. I guess a couple of quick questions. One, it refers to duplexes, but not other options that might come down the pipe like triplexes. Those automatically become multifamily? Or by not explicitly listing them, does that hamper us any way within the policy itself? Ms. Jensen?
No, your worship. If you were looking at something like a triplex or a fourplex, we would treat that as a multifamily development.
Okay. It's that simple. Perfect. Appreciate it not being prescriptive. And I guess what I would like to get a sense of is we currently, by internal policy, essentially negotiate these community amenity charges. The proposal here is to give a dollar value to that, to give a starting point, to simplify that negotiation process. Can you give us some sense of, like, what that improves? Does it shorten the timeline for application? Does it reduce the load on staff? Does it make it easier to come to council with those things that have an expectation of approval? What is the intentional benefit of that? I'm just trying to get a sense of what the net result of this will be for council.
Your worship, I think in the long run, it really reduces uncertainty, both on the part of the applicant and on the part of staff. We, every application that comes through, we have lengthy discussions with the applicant as to what community amenities might look like. What we have to go by right now are the policies that are set out in the official community plan. So, it's very difficult for the applicant to try and determine what that might look like. And as you can see from the examples we've provided you tonight, they can range from quite steep to offering up, I'm a bit facetious here, but offering up a park bench. So, it does provide some direction for the applicant, a little bit more certainty as to what is expected of them. So, if we can put a dollar value to it as the base value, it'll give them a better feel for what that range should be, depending on what they're proposing.
I can see the value of that for sure. Thank you. And last question is just, there's exclusions in here, listed, affordable housing pieces, heritage conversions. In the policy itself, is it best to have that as a firm exclusion? Or is it better to have it as a recommended exclusion so that if there's some interesting things where there's a big ask, for example, of a heritage conversion in the rezoning, that it doesn't preclude us from applying a CAC as part of that application or pieces?
Your worship, I think, again, it's a policy. So, it's intended to just provide us some direction. I think if somebody came in with an application to take an older heritage home, for example, and convert it into multiple units, we would probably take a look at that and say, "What is the benefit here? What is that shared benefit to the community and to the applicant?"
Okay, thank you very much. Councilor Ne?
Okay, just very quickly. It's a bit of a follow-up on one of the questions the mayor just asked. But in the policy at 2.1, you've got one to the five specific amenity contributions to which the funds could be directed. So, is that exclusive? And I'm just wondering if you could help us understand how you chose those. And some of them overlap with what's in the OCP. And then others don't include it. For example, public art obviously stands out for me that is not here. So, if you could just help me understand what's here, is it exclusive? And how it was decided to choose these and leave others that are in the OCP out?
Certainly. So, as we were reviewing potential amenities as a priority list, we were looking to both the policies that are already set out in the official community plan as well as what we've heard from council in terms of their strategic priorities. So, this list would not be exclusive. We could have an applicant that would come in and ask to provide public art, for example. That is something that we would certainly bring forward to council. But it was really intended to set what we're seeing as the highest priorities for council. So, for example, you have a number of policies or the amenities that are listed within the OCP that could almost be addressed through another program. So, for example, improvements to roads and sidewalks as part of that development. We wanted to focus on those pieces that were specifically, that would fall under an amenity program. Then we looked to council's strategic priorities as to how that might tie in. So, again, these are the priorities that staff could see. Council can certainly add or subtract from that. It doesn't preclude what's already in the OCP, but it was just intended to set the priority.
So, through you, Chair, just to be clear then. So, would council have to specify that these are just examples, but other things could be used? Or are you saying that at the point of a negotiation, it would be the prerogative of staff to make those discretionary decisions with an applicant?
Thank you. We would point the applicant to this policy to say, "Here's what council's priorities are," so that they can work with that. But if they choose to come back with something that falls outside of this, that's certainly within council's prerogative to take a look at that as well.
Okay, thank you. Council Patterson, or Councilor Green?
Thank you, your worship, and I will be brief. Through you too, staff. Thank you for answering all of the many questions that we have tonight. I just have a couple left. One is, what is the role of the public voice in this process? I know I wouldn't be feeling confident to determine what some of the priority amenities might be on behalf of the community. So, I'm just wondering if there is a role for the community to participate over time in identifying what some amenities might be important to them. And it may vary on neighborhoods. Also, I'm hopeful that this policy, I know you mention a review each year, which I think is a really, really good thing. And the fact that it will be reviewed may address some of the concerns around the target rates at this point. So, I'm assuming that this policy would be open to change and to adjustment if need be and that an annual review would be really useful. And I think those were all my points. So, I just wondered if there is a role for the community voice in this process? And if an annual review, if we need to adjust certain things in the policy, we will be able to do that. Thank you.
Ms. Jensen?
Thank you. As far as the annual review goes, exactly that. I think we recognize that things change over time. So, we want to make sure that we're reaching our targets, that the policy is working for both sides. As far as the community goes, again, we haven't undertaken any consultation, coming back to committee the whole with the policy. I think this is a good venue if the community wants to speak to it. The other part of that is that you did go through an official community plan process and those amenities that are laid out in the OCP policy would have come out of that public process.
Just a supplementary comment.
Absolutely.
But that consultation took place, it is now seven years ago. And I think in that time, certainly the market has changed in terms of housing. The, you know, there have been a lot of community changes. And I know that a lot of this is based on the 0.5% growth rate. But frankly, I think Oak Bay needs to be sustainable. And at some point, we're going to have to look to adjusting that, perhaps. But at this point, I think some factors have changed. So, I appreciate the OCP is the document we're working from. But I think there may be an opportunity to also review it to make sure that some of that information is still relevant and current to the community. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Green. I'd just point out that's our job here tonight, to try and update if there's anything that we feel is missing from that list or we want to prioritize on that list or we want to remove. It's our purview. It's our job. So, Council Patterson?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. And this is, this follows a little bit on what Councilor Green just raised. But, and I'd like perhaps comments, I would think, from Mr. Anderson. But the community amenity dance is one that I've done over the years in many communities. And I'm going to try to choose my words very wisely here because this is not, it's not set. You don't, this isn't something you're wrestling people to the ground and you order them to pay. This is a voluntary contribution. But my experience was that the strongest encouragement to support amenities in communities came from the community. And it was very interesting how skilled communities could be in expressing and encouraging you to support a better community, because you were going to be part of it. But the encouragement came actually at meetings, generally at commission meetings, at planning commission meetings, where public and applicants had a voice and there may have been an introduction session. And members of the community would be there to say, "It's a wonderful community and it would be even better if we had these things." And what their wish list was, was generally aligned with the value of the project. But we don't have a process here for that to take place. So, it would be done with the staff, you know. But I think this is where commissions like the Heritage Commission can be really strong advocates for encouraging applicants to also want to have a better community. And just as a second part of that, having been an applicant for many years on the other side, what was important to me too was fairness. So, I wanted them to be able to demonstrate that I was not being unduly encouraged to contribute. So, you know, I wanted to see what it was for and also generally to be able to see the value to both sides out of it. And in the report, it talked about the amenities and the estimated costs. I think the categories are fine, but I think the estimated costs are very large. And I just feel that in order to encourage participation, to have programs that are more relative to specifically what the applicant might be contributing to and what it might do. Because it's unlikely that anybody's contribution is going to give us a 2.5 million for the streetscaping. So, you might have to break that down into smaller segments to encourage participation. And so, it's more like menus of, here's a wish list, here's the prices, here's where we go. And it opens a discussion. But the best advocates for doing that are the voices in the community. Because they're usually passionate, they're supportive, you want them to like you, you know, and support you as an applicant. And so, there's a really positive place for the community in this. So, that follows up on Councilor Green's. Have you given any thought to defining this a little more?
Okay. Mr. Anderson? And I just, I think it was important to remember the scale of the majority of these. We're looking at most primarily single-family. Mr. Anderson?
So, you know, it was interesting to hear earlier tonight, discussion around Victoria and neighborhood plans, providing better refinement. And that has been our experience generally in the profession, that you have your sort of general list in a community plan and then you get a further individualization of that list as you go into neighborhood areas. And I think what happens in our process, and the advisory planning commission is part of this process as well, I just thought I would make mention of that, is that you do have an opportunity. For example, when someone proposes a development, they're encouraged to go speak with the neighborhood about their proposal. And those are great opportunities to hear about what might be a priority for people living within the vicinity of that proposed development. There's often an interest to see the amenity land somewhere near what's being proposed. But very often, it's also a contribution toward a housing fund or to parks or, you know, it can go somewhere general as well. So, the idea of, I guess, a menu that breaks that down, I think in some ways on a lot of these staff really do do that. For example, when someone proposes to have the amenity go toward a park, usually the parks director has in mind where they might need a little bit of assistance in terms of delivering that extra piece to a neighborhood park, for example. So, it kind of happens a little bit on the ground. But I do like the idea of, if you do go into neighborhood planning exercises, you start to speak about amenity and it's part of that, what do we want to see in our neighborhood? And those are great processes if we can get to them in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Anderson? Anybody else which should speak? I want to invite the public to come back, to come up and have a few words if anybody wants to come forward. Councilor Zelka?
Thank you so much, Chair. I'll try to be a little more brief. With respect to the rates, having some experience now and as a second-term counselor and knowing how hard it is to get changes to bylaws brought forward and then get all the work done and get it brought to high priority and then actually get that darn thing moved forward. I saw how long it took, for example, to get the rates and fees updated, which I was very pleased to see happen. But probably they're going to be way out of date by the time we can finally get back to them. And I worry that these will be way out of date by the time we finally get back to them as well. So, I think it might be prudent to possibly follow along a process similar to, say, what's used for the library rates. I noticed that the library rates, if Oak Bay value of assessments goes up, the library rates go up in proportion. And I'm wondering whether we should probably tie these rates with a similar type of formula. God forbid, if the market dropped out, we would obviously, we would want to drop these rates because that would be a disincentive to build or to do something. So, I can imagine if the assessments go down, we would want these to go down. So, why don't we just do that right now and build it in? I put that question to you.
Put that question to staff, yeah. Is that, is it practical to put in an index, essentially, like a, just a default index of a certain percent per year, or tie it to the CPI, so that the recommended number sort of shifts over time without having to come back to this table?
If I may, Your Worship, I, I'm just going to go on a couple decades of experience that I, I haven't seen a lot of changes in amenity contribution policy rates in, in those sorts of timeframes. So I've, I've not heard of sort of an annual modification of rates. I mean, part of the certainty piece around setting a, a base rate for your amenity contribution policy is that investments were made inland on a, on a longer-term timeframe. So if, you know, I guess if the, if it's indexed, then, then they'll know it's going to lift and lift and lift. But it's really, seems a little bit fine-grained from staff perspective. It seems that we should try and set a rate that we think is reasonable and comparable to, to this region, and move forward on that, using it as a base, remembering that it's a base for us to, to start that conversation. So if things start to really heat up, and everybody's happy, we can probably negotiate a little bit more, is, is basically been my experience. So, I mean, obviously, welcome any other comments, because I've just not seen an annual sort of resetting of, of amenity contribution policy rates.
If I could just follow up with that? So if that's the case, then, then that, for me, is even greater incentive to start high, and then allow, allow the developer to negotiate, negotiate us down. It's, it's a good, a good approach to take. It works everywhere else, so why not here? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Zelka. Yeah, it's an interesting point of review. I mean, obviously, a 2% increase is $100 a year, which doesn't seem like much, but over 10 years is another $1,000 added to that. It was an incremental piece. So, Council Green?
I think what's important for me is that staff have recommended a review period each year. I think that's an important point. It gives us all a chance to not only take further information and input from staff and the community at large, but it gives us a chance to make any adjustments, I think, according to how Council Zelka has described the situation. But I think this is a starting point. And I suppose we could go on and on all night about rates. I don't feel qualified to set those rates myself. I do know that, the feeling is that, that real estate is high in Oak Bay, and, and it is. I think we're the highest, highest community in the region. I'm not totally convinced that it's because of the official community plan, though. I think there are a lot of other factors that go into market rates and assessments. So I would be, I, I would be looking to other sources of information. So at this point, I, I think staff have provided us with a model that, that we can come back to in a year. They will monitor it. I'm sure they will raise their hands if there's an issue or a problem. And I think, I'm hopeful that we will have a, a voice for the community in the process. I think our, our commissions and committees would be good sources, or resources. And I, I do agree, it would be, as Ms. Jensen has pointed out, probably wise to involve partners, relevant partners in, in providing some feedback before we fix the policy. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Green. I'm going to invite folks from the audience to come forward, and, and just if you have any comments or questions, I'll invite that. And I think one of the things I wouldn't mind some clarity on from this committee is just where, if any, we would like to see this referred to. I would think the three options included would be the Advisory Planning Commission, which would look at this as a policy piece, the Heritage, because they're explicitly listed in here as, as one of those exclusions, and the development and community themselves, so they could give some feedback in terms of what, what works well in the industry. But whether or not any or all of those are in, I'd just like some guidance from committee on. And, yes, Council Green?
I'm sorry to interrupt, Your Worship, but would it be wise to include parks rec, and culture, because we've talked about art, we've talked about Parkland. I see Mr. Herman in the audience, so I think it would be important for that commission to have a look at it as well. Thank you.
Okay, welcome, sir. Name and municipality residents, please.
Curtis Hobson, Oak Bay. Okay. So most of my comments, I think, are more food for thought and discussion, and some of them have been gone over already, so I'll, I'll try and edit those ones out. I hope everyone on council and staff maybe had a chance to read the letter that was submitted by Barbara Judson. So I think I know the answers to these, but I just wanted to, to state them, to make sure that everybody's on the same page. So a potential project that had a market rate housing, affordable housing, and commercial space, all in one building. I assume that would be done on a case-by-case basis, so all those factors would be taken into consideration. So affordable housing's excluded, but market's not, and commercial's not. So I just wanted to be clear, and I assume that, from the report I read, that the planning department would be negotiating that. And I'll just bring this point out now. Mr. Anderson is referred to as 20 years of experience, so I would just not expect an answer now, but hope that he has experienced negotiating, negotiating community amenity contributions. And if not, maybe some professional development from the district to...
I think we have a, it's not our place here to comment on the professional development on staff, frankly.
Well, I'm just wondering.
But also, just, I just want to point out, we have, you know, we have external consulting already involved in this whole process as well, so that's a piece here.
Right, keep moving. So affordable housing provisions are a case-by-case basis as well. And I noticed that some communities just do charge community amenity contributions for affordable housing, and I know in the report, they're fully excluded. And then that brings me up to the case that we all know the crumbling state of our infrastructure. And so an affordable housing project comes forward, we waive all the community amenity contributions. But then the infrastructure demands of the said project have to be taken into consideration. So I'm wondering how, if, if that's a case-by-cases that involves Mr. Haran as well?
Mr. Hobson, let's hold that, because it's actually, it's a, it's a good point, question that comes back. And I, I think staff touched on this a little bit, but the CACs are one component. So in a situation like that, where there's a large multifamily affordable housing piece, or, we're not, two parts, two-part question, are CACs automatically excluded in that consideration? My, my understanding is no, it's a sort of a guideline piece, but not automatically. But what other aspects come into that, into that discussion in terms of contributions to address issues like impact on, on the pipes, roads, and other pieces? Ms. Jensen?
Thank you, Your Worship. Yes, as we mentioned in the report and earlier this evening, there are a number of different programs that impact any kind of proposed development. So if you had a, a mixed development proposed, for example, that had affordable housing along with other aspects involved in it, we would be looking specifically at those pieces. If council approved this policy, are we exempting the affordable housing units, but then we're, we're targeting, as mentioned, the $30 per square meter for the commercial aspect? So it really is a, a balance of those pieces that are within that development. That does not preclude the other bylaws that we have in place for addressing the other forms of, of impact on, on the neighborhood. So if we're looking at affordable housing, but they have pipes in the road that need to be upgraded, the, the road needs to be widened, they still need to provide those pieces.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Hobson.
I guess the other piece too, that, so we've got a market rate units, affordable rate units, and commercial space units. But I also know, in one of the reports, it was mentioned, community meeting space. So it's community meeting space, but it's rented. So does that make it a commercial space? Or is it still just a community meeting space? So that's another thing that I imagine would be on a case-by-case basis. I'll continue. The base target rates, I, I would agree with some of the comments made on council that they're low. And I had the question, base not, not to go below, and I think that was explained. The exemplars that were used in the report were good, but I, I think the report is a great draft, but it lacks a little bit of nuance and understanding of the community of Oak Bay. So again, I think it's a great draft. Some of the comments made about landlift, I think a combination perhaps might be a better approach, not singularly base rates negotiation, but based on, based on the market, the landlift calculation, I think, is, is a really good idea, because, you know, some of the current examples that we, that we've had in Oak Bay, let me just see where they are. Well, we had the Bakker, right? So we all know about that. And from my sort of back-of-the-envelope calculations, if we started with a base rate and that project, and I can imagine most applicants are going to come starting, okay, well, I want 10 units, here's my $40,000, right? So typically, by providing a base, that's probably what they're going to offer first, although I don't know. But we notice, we know that the Bakker brought in $2,325 per unit, plus the additional cost charges for the road. And the, a unit in the Bakker for, that was 1,550 square feet, was listed, I don't know if it sold, but it was listed for $1.9 million. So to me, that's a pretty good deal on the developer. They paid $2,325 per unit, and, and the unit that they sold was for 1.9 million. I don't know if that's the average price of a unit in the Bakker, but just remind council that, that was quite a contentious development. And word around the community, and some of the people I talked to, that it wasn't a very good deal for the municipality. So in the future, when that, those types of developments are negotiated, I really think who's ever doing the negotiation really has to be a little harder-nosed. Okay, let's continue here.
It's a secret of all good negotiations, when everybody's unhappy, right?
Yeah, exactly. It's like, I didn't get exactly what I wanted, and neither did I, but I can live with it. So that's, that's typically, can be seen as a good negotiation. Yeah, I think Council Patterson mentioned, Oak Bay is just plain unaffordable, right? We have, we have to understand that. And I, I believe there was a McLennahan report not too long ago. Oak Bay's unaffordable, and I don't know to what extent council's tinkering with the market is going to change that. The type of development we are seeing in Oak Bay, you know, whether it's the type of development we need or not is, is an opinion. It's not affordable development. Typically, what we see in Oak Bay is we see an old house on a million-dollar lot, torn down, replaced by a new house on that lot. That's two to three, or 2.3 to 2.5 million dollars. So as I mentioned, the Bakker, this new policy, if we started with a base rate, it would work out to 172,000. So it's pretty much the same. The community reaction, developer profits, those are the things considered. Like you say, you know, it's, it's like an almost win, almost win, and no one's happy. The Yale Street application seemed really appropriate, much more appropriate per lot. I, I was impressed with that. And I think those houses are a great addition to the community. Let's continue here. I think the commercial rate is pretty good, you know. It's, it works out to, what, $30 a meter squared? And I don't know if we're going to get a lot of future commercial development in Oak Bay, but that, that seemed like a fair rate. We have to understand that in Oak Bay is almost exclusively pull factors. There's, there's tons of reasons why people want to live in Oak Bay, and the only push factor that I can figure out is affordability. So, you know, that McLennahan report, again, was basically, you know, Oak Bay is unaffordable. So then the question that was brought up is, is it a reply to all rezonings? And the answer was yes. So if we have a big lot split in two, the reality is, one big lot is turned into two, and then conservatively, that new lot sells for a million dollars. So as a base rate of $6,000, I don't know if that's a, if that's a good place to start as a negotiation for basically a rezoning windfall for the applicant, right? So even if, even if we times that by 10, $60,000 on a million dollars rezoning, I don't really think that's an adequate contribution. I have some numbers written down, but I won't share them, because they might be a little shocking for people. I think this was clarified. Council needs to be fully aware of the process for each CAC negotiation, and it needs to be codified in policy. And I think that's what we're talking about here tonight. But I also want to remind council that there's been a few instances around heritage revitalization agreements, that it's like, you were all surprised, because the process was followed to the letter, and the result was not what you expected. So I'm glad to hear that what you will be voting on, as far as rezonings go, it's, you'll know, you'll have all the details, right? So you'll know that this is the CAC. Okay, yes or no? So I'm really happy to hear that. We have to understand, too, that we have the CACs, but we don't have the development cost charge policy yet. And then we also, there's a Parkland acquisition contributions that are, again, separate, and municipal fees. So those are all my development costs, aside from the construction. And then, when we take all those into consideration, we can, we can get a better idea of what we're, we're dealing with. And again, all those things need to come to you, and you need to vote on them. And so I'm glad to hear that will happen. And then finally, I found the exemplars that were used for Oak Bay quite interesting, quite telling, but there was one that was, that was a, was a big omission, and I thought it might be a loophole that people might be able to explode. And that was a 237 King George Terrace, as an example. So that's, that's a four-lot subdivision that was approved by the approving officer. So that's out of your hands. So really, without any policy for the approving officer, is that a backdoor around it, right? So we know that basically, as far as I can tell, there was a Parkland acquisition contribution, but that's it. I don't know if there was any CAC charges for that, and perhaps there's some clarification, or I missed it somewhere. But the approving officer approved that subdivision, and I don't know if there was any CAC charges, and I don't think there was. So to me, that's a big omission, right? So it's all great that we can negotiate these things, but if the decision's outside of the council chambers, then how do we know that we are getting community amenity contributions from subdivisions that are approved by the approving officer?
I think the, do you want to?
Well, yeah, help me out.
So there's, I think you, you hit the key point there. There's, there are many, many, I mean, we talked about this a few times now, there's many, many tools. So subdivisions require frontage improvements, so that stretch of the road has to be done. For simple subdivisions, that can be in the hundreds of thousands of dollars, just that portion of it, as they upgrade the pipes in the road and to the center of the road for those, those properties. There are, in the instance of that, the 5% that you're talking about, King George Terrace, the Parkland feat, so that plus the frontage, that's a little uneven, because of course, it's, it's depends on how long, how wide that frontage is, how much you're paying for them. But you're right, if there's not a rezoning piece, this, but in those, in those situations, the CACs wouldn't kick in, right? In, in a, in a subdivision without a rezoning, only the subdivision rules kick in, not the, not a rezoning piece.
So, you know, as a, as a citizen, I think, I think that's a big omission, and that's something that needs to be rectified. All those things that, that contribute, or to make the subdivision, the landlift piece that Council Appleton talked about, we know that that was a, that was a very, very lucrative subdivision for the individual that brought that forward. The house originally sold for $6 million approximately, and the new houses are going to sell for that. So I, I, I don't have exact figures, but I think, I think those examples are good to bring to people's attention. So that's why, you know, I'm almost done here. I would really push for a tweak, and the landlift portion that Council Appleton mentioned, because I do think that, you know, Oak Bay's a beautiful community. We all love it. And people that visit it love it. And those people that visited and love it, and are capable, want to move here, right? And so when there's that much money to be made in redevelopment, I really think it's important that the community benefit as much as the developer. I'm, I'm like, it's not extortion, but, but it has to be a value, and it has to be a fair value. And the current examples, particularly the Bakker and King George Terrace that I just brought up, I really don't think those were fair for the community. Thanks.
Thank you. Anybody else which should come forward and speak at this time? All right. Oh, there's someone. You have to come quick. You have to be quick on these lists. We're going to get back to this table.
Hello, Charmaine Minus, Oak Bay. I just have one question through you to staff, about the, the heritage, heritage homes being exempt from these fees. Now, I'm presuming that's homes that are actually designated heritage? Is that correct?
Put that to staff.
Those items, those heritage homes we're referring to as identified in the policy would be homes that are located on the Heritage Register.
So not, as well as designated, they're also on the Heritage Register, because that's two separate things?
Ms. Jensen?
You are correct. They are different things. For Oak Bay, if your home is designated, you are on the Heritage Register. So it would be those homes that may not be designated, as well as the homes that are.
But are on the register. So I, I just had one scenario in my mind about that is, for example, in sixteen oh five York Place, the, it was recently subdivided, and the home that was on one of the lots was designated heritage, and there was no community benefit charged. But what about the example of, say, a developer getting hold of one of the extremely large mansions, that's a single-family home, and doing it up into, I don't know, dividing it into, say, six luxury apartments, and then saying, and after I've done that, I will designate it? Does that exempt it then from the community fund, those funds? I mean, can, can you charge a community amenity fee if he's going to designate it afterwards?
Put the question to staff. Seems you're getting very specific into subject pieces here, but we'll, we'll, we'll do this.
Yeah, it's, it's difficult to provide very specific answers on some of these because we don't know what all the factors are. As I mentioned earlier, I would suggest that if we're talking about a heritage home that is either looking to, to be on the Heritage Register or already is, depending upon the scale of what they're proposing to do, may or may not impact what that community amenity contribution looks like. It really would be part of that negotiation process, which would then ultimately be in front of council.
Oh, I, I suppose then my suggestion would be that if it isn't already on the register, they would still have to be charged those fees, that saving a house, I mean, that's wonderful for them, but they're also, as Mr. Hobson said, making a lovely place to live in Oak Bay that, you know, people will, will cut swaths through the jungle to get to. So I still think that the developer should be charged something. Thank you.
Thank you. Again, I think we're, from a policy discussion piece, the, the guidelines in here are to not, where there's a heritage conversion specifically, so protecting of the heritage and converting it, but that doesn't preclude it from happening. Welcome.
Thank you. Jake, Jake Richardson, Oak Bay. Just a, a quick comment. I know, I think this probably goes to DCCs, not CACs. Part of the reason that a lot of people live here is because we have a wonderful urban canopy, and I think that our trees and our mature landscape is in itself a community amenity. Therefore, following up on something councillor Zelka said, I wonder if, just on your average residential lot, if somebody chooses to tear down an, an old, maybe small house, and there are mature trees in there, okay? And build out to the absolute maximum of set, of setbacks, or minimum of setbacks. If, if it is possible to attach a DCC to trees, which may encourage them to keep the look and the feel of Oak Bay. So if you're gonna tear down a, a Gary Oak or a, or a...
I'll put the question to staff, but I don't think that's the appropriate tool for this. We have a tree protection bylaw revisions that are coming, and that's really the place that we have to control that.
Yes, but does it?
I will ask the question. Are, are DCCs or CACs applicable in terms of tree protection?
Oh, I, I, your worship, I heard the conversation on DCCs, not CACs. So not for DCCs is the answer, and for CACs, we are already contemplating that in the amenity policy.
In terms of funding additional trees being planted?
I, I'm actually not talking about, I'm talking about saving existing trees. Do you get it?
Yeah.
Build a...
Yeah.
So saving the trees would be a...
Design your house differently, build it...
Saving, saving the trees is a different policy entirely from the CACs and DCCs. That would be a tree protection bylaw, it'd be some, some policy guidelines, but not, not this discussion here.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Yes, thank you. Anybody else wish to come forward and speak to us? Anybody else? Okay. I'll come right after this table. Thank you, everyone, for coming forward and talking. Back to this table. We have a couple of items that I think we have to determine where, if anywhere, we're gonna refer this. If there's consensus on, on asking staff to reevaluate those, the, the dollar figures suggested. And if there's any further questions, then let's get to those. But we are now past eight-thirty, so I'm trying to move this along into a way that we, we can kinda get to a, to a conclusion. I need a, I need a motion if there's anything else addition, or just any suggestions here. Councillor Nay and then councillor Zelka.
Well, I, I'd, I appreciate the discussion with the committee and, and also the input from the, the, the community. I, I think I, we could sit here and start tinkering with the existing policy, but my preference would be to get it out to our committees and commissions and have some input there. For example, I'm just thinking, I'd like to see the public art as one of the amenities, but I, I think we're gonna hear that from our community. So I, I'd suggest that, and I'd be prepared to make a motion, that we move this to the APC, the Heritage Committee, the, the Parks and Rec, and get some development community input into the CAC as well.
Second.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a mover and a seconder. Councillor Zelka, you wanted to add something?
Well, I, I, I like the list. I would also like to, and hopefully this, the, the, council will be open to this, is to add the public to that. This might be an opportunity to start our community engagement process. And maybe whether it's a town hall, or whether it's some sort of an appropriate, if we're gonna have, if we're gonna be meeting with developers, we might as well also be meeting potentially with, with, with the public as well, and giving, maybe give them an early opportunity, at least through some sort of a process, to start providing comments on something like this, as opposed to what always seems to be at the last second.
Okay.
I, I offer that as a suggestion to start.
Okay, I'm not sure, we can, we can talk a little bit about that perhaps, as it comes back, councillor Green?
Thank you. I don't disagree with you, councillor Zelka, however, I think the process has to be well-defined and clarified. And I'm not sure what the best process is. This is, so I'm thinking, you know, perhaps utilizing our website is maybe the, the most efficient way. And I would also look to staff and to our corporate services for some recommendations on what kind of public process, because if we're gonna do it, let's do it, you know, correctly. And, and let's do it so that it has meaning for both the public and for staff.
Okay. Councillor Green, did you? Oh, Ms. Verella?
Thank you, your worship. So one of the things, we, we know council is very committed to public engagement. I think if staff brought you back an idea of a timeframe for what that would actually look like, because that's extensive workload that you're talking about, and you've also loaded them up with a lot of other significant projects. So again, we have to be mindful, if we're keeping your projects moving ahead, this is part of the discussion we're gonna have at the table. So what I'd like to do is have staff bring back a discussion about how they could possibly get it out into the community and the commissions, and then what that will do to their other timelines, their juggling.
If I make, make a suggestion here, this occurs to me, there's a couple of things that, that sort of bother me about the, the idea of just referring it and, and having going to that process. Part of it is, is the time, part of it is the workload. This has been on our to-do list for some time, and it hasn't got done. And now it's here, and I'm afraid that we might defer it by another six, twelve months if we go through this. I think the key questions that we have here are, are the rates appropriate? And get some feedback from that, from both the industry and from the public. And the, the other question is, what are the priorities for, what are we gonna use those funds for? Are they appropriate? And so those are the two key questions that I would have to the public. I, I also wanna just acknowledge the fact that if you look at sort of the last ten years of development that these rezoning has applied to, it's not a lot. It's sixty units or so. So multiply that, so it's a couple hundred thousand dollars over ten years, twenty thousand dollars a year. We're not, we're not talking, you know, millions of dollars in income here. And so we have to be somewhat proportionate in terms of what we're, what we're actually doing the workload for, because we do have DCCs, and we have other pieces on top of all of that. So I just think, just, sorry, this occurs to me here, so I gotta think about this. It may be worthwhile for us to actually go and direct staff to, to go forward with this, because it's gonna have to go through a bylaw process, but put out the rates and the, and the, the target options for funding that to those committees for, and for input, so that we can make, we can do this draft, we can, we can always change the numbers and the specifics later, but we can do, we can actually implement it now, which may be a viable option. So that for the next, if this does take six months, we actually have a policy in place. Is that something that's doable? I see Mr. Anderson squirming a little bit, so I know he might not wanna, so if I may, if I may, just send it back to Mr. Anderson. Do you have something to add?
Reading my mind. No, your worship, not, not squirming. I just, I, I would acknowledge that this is a council policy, and so it's not a bylaw. So the, the process could be that you recommend to yourselves to the next meeting that this be approved by council. What we're hearing, of course, is that you'd like to have some committee look at this. So one suggestion might be that, in fact, council endorses the policy in principle with a referral to the committees conducted by staff. That will add an estimated three months to, to this policy coming back to council, based on, on what I see. So with that.
Before I take a revision to a motion or anything else, I just, Mr. Jones, Ms. Verella, is there anything else from a, from a procedure perspective that you would see as being sort of optimal here? To move this forward reasonably quickly in terms of the policy, but have that chance for feedback on the, on some of the details? Mr. Jones?
Your worship, from my perspective, I think what staff, what you heard from staff is that we would continue to monitor this process and the, the level of charges for the CACs. And my suggestion would be that you adopt the policy and that we continue to monitor. And after adopting the policy, we refer it to the, the various committees and commissions for their input. And then a year from now, we will have the input from them, and we could have an understanding if our policies are, are good. They are not overly expensive. We have no development cost charges. Staff, to their credit, do a very good job negotiating with developers. One of the really important things of this that we didn't discuss a lot today, though, was the importance of giving the development community some certainty. And that, that's a big part of this. You know, if, if you come in to municipal hall and say, we wanna do this, and we say, well, okay, yeah, and then we're gonna negotiate about this, this, and this. For them, it's very helpful to have a sense of, of, of costs. They need that, to, to take that to the bank, to be blunt. So from my perspective, a recommendation to council to endorse this, and then over the next year, to continue to do some, some consulting, might be the way to go.
I'm just thinking how to word that appropriately. Adopt and, adopt or adopt in principle, refer to the, to the various bodies, and bring back to this table a year from now in terms of, in terms of bringing back a review. Mr. Anderson?
Yeah, I think the, the recommendation is that you would adopt the policy, and then we would conduct the referrals, and then come back as an annual review with a report out on, on all of that. So I think that's what I'm hearing next door, and I believe that's the recommendation from staff.
Okay, I'm just, I'm, but you have to come back to this table here to see if that's a comfort level at this table to do. I, I know councillor Zelka wants to have higher run rates to start with, so I guess that's part of the, please, councillor Green? Sorry, councillor Appleton?
Thank you, your worship. Just, I, I would be prepared to, to support the policy, but I just wanted to confirm really quickly with staff whether or not there's the necessity to actually include language specific to a couple of things that I brought up earlier. Number one, that affordable housing is, is included as an, I'm not sure how we deal with it as far as what language would be in the policy. So I'm looking to have section two-point-one include affordable housing as an allocation. So I think I heard staff say that that was something that they, they would incorporate, but I just wanted to confirm if I'm, if I'm supporting the actual policy itself. So just, that's number one. And then number two, just speaking to, I, I agree with both staff that, that a target rate or a base rate applies to most of the situations that we might be dealing with on a, on a day-to-day basis in Oak Bay, but then also just returning to my earlier point and some, some of the comments from the public about having a trigger for evaluation and, and hearing from staff that there is the potential for establishing language in the policy that would speak to triggering a land lift valuation for projects of a certain scope of scale. And granted, we can't include a lot of specificity about what that looks like, because this is voluntary, and I understand that. But I just, I'd be prepared to support the policy if it, if it, sort of, if staff could just respond to whether or not that language could be included.
Mr. Anderson?
Your worship, first comment, if I may. Council concernedly direct that we add affordable housing to the priority list, so I think that's a fairly straightforward thing that can be done. With respect to the land lift, I would think we would have to sort of review that and, and come back with, with something for council to consider. That can be done in a fairly straightforward manner by amending a policy as well. So I would suggest that that would be the approach we'd need to take off the cuff. I'm not really prepared here to say, here's the language we'd put in here to provide for a land lift. I think it needs a little bit more review than, than this.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. Councillor Zelka? Oh, is that councillor Green? Councillor Zelka?
Thank you very much, here. I'm, I'm very much intrigued with, with moving in, in more quickly than more slowly. I'm, I'm a bit uncomfortable adopting it with it as it is. It does seem like it needs to have a little bit more to it. I, I really like some of the suggestions put forward by councillor Appleton, adding the allocation for affordable housing and providing the option for land lift analysis so that for those few but incredibly valuable land lift situations that occur, that these, in this case, it would be a laughable amount of, of CACs would be applied. So to avoid that situation, if we could at least get those two added in, you've got my vote.
Well, I think, okay, we have a motion on the, just on the floor right now to, to go refer it, but if the mover and the second are amenable, we can take that back, and we can just have a motion to adopt with adding the affordable housing under two-point-one, and to direct staff to, in the review, to come back with some wording, some potential wording, and including triggers for land lift.
Okay, I'm happy to make that amendment, as, as you've described.
Councillor Nay? Is that, is that, is that, I'll need a second if we're gonna talk about it.
Well, the, the only question I would ask is, is the review a year from now, or is the review when it's ready? Because I would not want to wait a whole year for these two items to be added.
So the, that motion would actually put the, the change of two-point-one immediately as part of the piece, and the review of the trigger language would probably logically come back in a year's time. Again, it only triggers on major projects, and we're not having any major projects in the next year, so I don't think there's any danger in that, personally.
Yeah, we, we think that would be part of the consultation process with the community and the industry.
That's fair enough. We don't, well, we have some sense of how, how long things take. Councillor Green?
Just for consideration by council, if we could add the word "in principle", that we approve this in principle, and then that indicates to the community and to others that, that there may be changes coming in the future, and, and that it's, would, is, is that advisable through you to Mr. Jones?
Your worship, I think from, from staff's perspective, it would be that you adopt, and that we come back to you with consultation information after.
So, and that's, I, I don't disagree with that, but I just wanna make sure that this committee is comfortable with that, with adopting it as it is right now, because I don't wanna push that forward if that's not the, the will of the body. So we have a, actually, we don't have a motion at the table because it hasn't been seconded yet, so... at the table because it hasn't been seconded yet. So I'll come back to this body. We have a motion. Anybody wanting to second it as it's worded? If not, look to somebody else to come up with some wording for a motion. Any, any seconders?
Second.
Fine? All right. So that's where it's at. So we can maybe work on modifying this motion that people want to see fit. The motion right now is to adopt, to refer and to direct staff to bring back possible changes to land lift options. Councillor Zelka?
Can I have the motion as, as seconded, please? I presume it includes the allocation for affordable in policy?
It's probably best if staff actually read it back at this point so that we have some very clear, is that possible?
Your worship, so I, I think we've got, so what we have is that you're adopting the policy, that you've directed us to include affordable housing in section 2.1, and that you have asked us to look more closely at, we'll call the lift, and come back to council with that, and also to refer to the various committees for feedback, and that we will bring that feedback to you in the next year.
Okay. Thank you. Councillor Green?
And could we, could we ensure that the process for public feedback, if the policy could be posted on the website? And if there's some way to have, have a feedback loop for the public? Is that possible or is that a lot of work?
Your worship, yes, we can do that.
Thank you.
Councillor Zelka, you look like you want to talk, so I'm just gonna...
Thank you very much, Chair. I, I, I am liking where this is going and I appreciate the way the wording is laid out. I definitely want to move forward on, on a proactive basis. Could we provide a little more certainty as to when the land lift item would be brought back in? And I, and I heard, you know, the, the, the year long, the year, year by year review is really just applying, providing a report and amend as necessary, whatever that means. I mean, who's doing the amending? Is it when we say necessary, when staff says necessary? That's not completely unclear. So I'm, I'm fine to sort of firm that up at later time. Just when is that later time?
I will put this to Mr. Anderson. And I think actually, if I'm being honest, I think an annual review is more, I mean, I think there needs to be a review in the shorter term, but realistically, if we're looking at adjusting the thousands of dollars, it's probably not, once it's established, probably not the necessary to do it every year, just given how rarely we actually get to some of our policies, it's probably not that likely. So I want to be realistic about that. Mr. Anderson?
I was just going to confirm that we're going to be coming back in a year's time with our, our review and the results of what we've said we're going to do. But yeah, beyond that, I think it is more typical to look at this about in every five-year kind of timeframe.
So if there's a relative assurance that within a year we'll have the land lift piece put in, which for me would, would, would take, take into account the fact that our rates, to my mind, seem incredibly low, and to my mind, embarrassingly low, then I would feel comfortable supporting the motion. Thank you.
Thank you. And, and Mr. Anderson, do we have a timeline for when the DCCs pieces are actually going to come, going to come forward?
Just that, probably mid-year, we'll be bringing a report respecting DCCs.
Okay, thank you. And I would just, my observation is that this is one piece of a, of a bunch of different parts of the puzzle. It's not meant to fix everything in once. So I think having the DCCs as part of that would be very helpful. So having this policy in place and talking about DCCs and the coming back and reviewing that towards the end of the year or a year from now would be helpful. Councillor Zelka?
Thank you very much, Chair. Because we didn't really talk much about the land lift item, is it, would, through Chair, would you mind if I asked a question of our guest with respect to the land lift aspect? The question I have, if you're okay with this, is, is it possible to have as part of a CAC with respect to an land lift, a, a percentage, like say a 2%, whatever the land lift is, 2% would be the recommended, oh, say, CAC amount?
I'll, I'll direct that to Mr. Anderson if you would like Mr. Wong to answer and do that as well?
Well, your worship, I think I can probably take that, but if you'd like Mr. Wong to speak as well, I can have him take the mic. But a land lift in, in principle is that you establish the percentage share that you expect the community to have with respect to the valuation of the land lift that's determined. So it is something that is typically a percentage, Vancouver, 75% on major projects, for example.
Okay, thank you.
Your worship, just to be clear, that, that's around rezoning?
Yes. Okay, thank you.
Are there any typical land lift policies and what, what rates are we seeing in the COD, if there are any?
This is a great question. Mr. Wong, since you're here and it's late, you might as well, you might as well participate.
And I walked nine minutes to get here, so. Thank you, through your worship. As, as shown in the examples, most of the communities do not necessarily use the land lift analysis, except on a case-by-case basis. Victoria did use a land lift analysis similar to what Mr. Anderson stated. So they would bring in a third-party consultant to determine the, the before and after component at time of rezoning, and it was 75% of whatever that land lift was. Same as city of Victoria, city of Vancouver as well, too. They are revisiting those as, as Ms. Jensen had suggested, but, but we've seen 50%, 75%. In some cases, we've seen 100% of that, of that additional land lift as well, too. So, so it does take time. It takes an extra step and it, and as Mr. Anderson said, it is generally for major projects as well, too.
Thank you. Just, I'm now curious, what does the cost actually go through a land lift analysis process? And he, I just, order Maggie, $5,000, $50,000? Is it dependent on the project entirely?
I would say it's, it's under 20, but I think it depends on, on, and let's not forget that there's a, a negotiation process around the results of that analysis as well. And I've been involved in one that took a year.
Okay. Thank you. All right. So we have a motion on the floor right now to enact immediately and then review, and come back with review with those, and make one change and come back and review in a year. That's the motion at the table. Any other discussion? Okay, I'll call the question. All those in favor? Opposed? Nobody opposed? Thank you very much. We need someone to read out the adjournment, because we're adjourning in camera.
I can, I will move that in accordance with section 91 subsection A and C of the community charter, that the open portion of the meeting of council be adjourned and that a closed session be convened to discuss personal information about an identifiable individual who holds or is being considered for a position as an officer, employee, or agent to the municipality or another position appointed by the municipality, and labor relations or other employee relations.
Second.
Seconded. All those in favor? Opposed? None opposed? Thank you everyone for coming up tonight and we will adjourn into the... Mr. Anderson, do you have a second?
Sure.
You don't feel like that was disparaging or anything?
No, no, you don't know what...
So you're going to be the one in the negotiation? I just like, yeah, like you're our star player.